Welcome, everybody. Mr. Meyer, will you lead us in the pledge?
Happily, please stand. Place your hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or to the staff. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Okay. Public hearing, we have none. Agenda items for separate action or adoption of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Okay. Because we have a member who is zooming in, we're going to do a roll call vote, so I'll just go down the line. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that is five in favor for the agenda. Approval of minutes.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that's five in favor of the minutes. Communications, we have none. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda. Okay. So we have two people in person, so we will start with Jerleene Tatum, and then we have Caesar on deck. And then actually, while we're waiting at our last meeting, we voted to extend time for public testimony on the agenda?
Correct. We extended it to one hour so that we could include emailed comments, and I have 27 emailed comments on the agenda.
Okay, so once we get started, we have two in-person and then we have 27, and we'll see how many we can fit in in that amount of time. Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Tatum wanted him to go first, if that's okay?
Uh, that's fine. If they've worked that out, yeah.
Hello. My name is Caesar Arminder. I live next to Wilson High, zip code 90804, and I'm here to make a comment about item 25, public comment. As you consider the public comment options, I encourage you to think about which options will give the Black and Brown children and parents the most direct and public access to the board, district staff, and the community at large. This decision is at the heart of our democracy because it can either deny or recognize the rights of the community to engage their elected representatives and public servants in the most transparent way possible. As you know, this is an issue of racial justice because Black and Brown parents and students face more institutional barriers than parents who are more directly connected and engaged by the district. I have come to know many of the board members and district staff personally, and I don't doubt your genuine love and compassion for the children who attend LBUSD. I have full confidence that the district will move forward in the right direction under the leadership of Board President Craighead and Superintendent Baker. I know that you both have a genuine desire to uplift marginalized communities through anti-racist policies and practices. My hope today is for the board to acknowledge that even though the district has done a lot of good for a lot of people, there are many parents and students who are still being left out of the process. These parents are feeling a sense of hopelessness and despair because the district's policies and practices are not meeting the urgency of their children's needs. The district has to be bold in its efforts to reach out to Black and Brown communities and validate their grievances and frustrations. The district can empower these families by honoring their voices and working together with them to continually recognize our system shortcomings in the area of racial equity. No single individual or single school district is the sole cause of systemic racism, but we are all responsible for its dismantlement. Racism has been a part of our institution since the foundation of this country. Forgive me for this crude analogy, but our fight against racism has been kind of like playing a game of whack-a-mole, where we use the mallet to bop one mole or one problem, but then we have to move on quickly to the next one. But the real and meaningful work of racial justice is to redesign the machine, the gears within the machine, the structures, the programming, so that we can do more than simply manage inequality. I'm hopeful that we can redesign our education system to prevent further racial trauma and instead nourish and liberate every child's spirit. Today, we have a chance to take a small but meaningful step towards anti-racist healing. I urge you to give parents and students a chance to make public comments in person, by phone, and by email letters that are read out loud. I hope that we can codify the past practice of giving the community at least one hour to comment on the items on the agenda and at least 30 minutes to comment on items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerleene Tatum. I'm a Long Beach parent, community advocate. I am here giving a statement on behalf of a group of parents. This statement has been prepared by public advocates, and I'm speaking to agenda item number 25. We are extremely disappointed that LBUSD has changed its public participation policy in the way that it has. It severely limits public discourse, especially for Black and Brown parents and caregivers. After schools closed in March, LBUSD adopted a public participation policy that permitted members of the public to email their public comment to be read by a staff member at the board meeting. After numerous parents and other community stakeholders complained that the lack of live participation option violated the Brown Act, the district changed the policy to allow in-person comment only. Although emailed comments were ultimately read at the last board meeting on August 5th, it was extremely confusing because the policy stated that in-person comments was the only option, and stakeholders who emailed their comments received a message that they must attend the board meeting in person to make a comment. Since the last board meeting, the public participation policy has changed yet again to allow email comment, but appears that the policy would be changed yet again per item 25 to not read those comments out loud at the meeting and only forward them to board members. This is not sufficient. Community members want the option to provide live comment with their own voices to the public at large, and limiting live public comment to a single in-person only option during a pandemic is cruel and illegal. Not only will LBUSD's public comment policy severely limit public discourse overall, it will completely eliminate the right to make the public comment for parents and other community members who are medically vulnerable and/or lack access to transportation. And as we all know, it is Black and Brown families who disproportionately suffer from these challenges. Not only will LBUSD's public comment policy severely -- oh, I got duplicates here. People with a wide variety of disabilities, including asthma, chronic lung disease, diabetes, and heart conditions, are at high risk. Board members, these are your meetings, and you can change your public participation policy tonight to include an option to provide live public comment via telephone, Zoom, or another live virtual platform, as Oakland, Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Malibu, Moreno Valley, and many others have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we have, right, the online comments.
This is from Nina Jackson. Until the COVID pandemic is over, the public should be able to comment at the Board of Education meetings by email and have their comments read during the meeting as long as the allotted time is available. If someone does not feel safe appearing in person, they should not have their right to be heard taken away from them.
This is from Charlie Trujillo and Paul Sharer. Dear Board of Education Directors and Executive Staff, I wish Board members to consider all forms of communication from the public and support voices to be heard during this difficult time when the spread of COVID-19 has reached peak numbers. Parents and teachers deserve to be heard by the board and the public when decisions may gravely impact lives, some are life or death. While we know this is a burden on the board to extend the time of the meeting, we feel this is a small task to consider, a small task to ask, considering the consequences of decisions that board members bear, which are far too great as they fall upon families' futures. We recommend that all comments mailed or emailed to board members for the board meetings be read out loud and for the public to be invited in person to read their own comments if they wish. We propose one hour maximum for comments to be read out loud and in-person for items on the agenda. We propose an additional 30 minutes for comments that are not on the agenda. While this may not be what is required in the state executive order protecting the Brown Act, I would ask to consider the unusual circumstances that laws haven't had a chance to catch up with, this unprecedented situation. We know that Dr. Felton Williams is opposed to having comments read out loud. He did excuse himself early during the last meeting, but we hope that given the urgent nature of COVID-19 related to impacts on education and public safety, that the board will agree to prepare for longer meetings in the future. Thank you for your consideration for allowing voices to be heard in public. Saying we read them isn't enough. We want the public to hear the voices and learn from others.
Mrs. President, at the last board meeting, we jumped ahead and had the people outside go before we read these. Do we want to do that again so that they won't be waiting an hour outside?
I think that's a good idea.
Is there, Branch, is there an issue with that?
Okay. Can you make a note of how much time we've spent?
Yes. So far.
Okay. I'm looking around at my fellow board members to get kind of a consensus.
That's more than fair.
More than fair?
Especially in this heat.
Thumbs up over here. Yes, let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for remembering that.
Yeah.
So bring in our first speaker for non.
Okay, so the first person is Chet Davidson. And, oh, one moment. And Jeff, on deck, we have Miriam Cummings. Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Board of Education and Executive Staff. Good to see everybody. My name is Chet Davidson. I am a maintenance employee for Long Beach Unified School District. I'm representing California School Employees Association. We are 2,200 members, employees here at Long Beach Unified, and I just came to speak to you tonight regarding parity and equity. We are, we are looking to get support and solidarity in, in decisions made by the board and I'm very happy for the teachers. You know, our safety, nobody wants to see anybody get hurt here or anybody get sick. And obviously, safety is first and foremost. We want parity in the classrooms. If the teachers can go home and be able to teach from the school, we want to make sure that our support staff that's working in the classrooms as well has that same protection. Our schools have been running. You know, we have essential employees. I am an essential employee. We have maintenance, custodial, transportation, nutrition, computer. We just have a lot of people that are, that are on board that have been working, and I want to make sure that they maintain their essential status as these schools stay empty. We need these people on board. There's a lot of people in the preschool system and the pre-care that are in high concern in our classified staff, including the Head Start, EduCare behavior. As we move forward in these unprecedented times, I know there's hard decisions being made, but I'm a dedicated employee. I'm concerned about our, our school district, our children. I'm here for the safety and security of children and staff, so I want to be in support. I just, I just know there's hard decisions to be made, but we need to make sure that our side of the house stays protected. And, and when we say all means all, I want to make sure that's all employees and it's not just some employees. That term could mean the student, but, but it's a confusing term to a lot of people out there because they're feeling like they're being sided on decisions being made. So as a school district, as, as, as an amazing urban school district that we all work here for, and I want to be a part of the solution and not part of the problem, I appreciate all your hard work and tough decisions ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Tonya Reyes-Uranga and Dr. Chris Kelly.
My name is Tonya Reyes-Uranga. Racial and gender equity must be considered in every area of the district. It's also evident that income inequities, or rather poverty, is a factor. It also must be considered. I believe we do this by collecting proper data, building the political and moral will to create policies that direct school district resources to resolve our problems of racial and gender inequity and income inequality. The safety officer stated, and this is all about the workshops you had in the last two days, that 50% of the calls are criminal. Do we collect data on the staff who detain by demographics, who detain people by demographics? If it results in an arrest by PD, do you keep data on when PD is called, the number arrested, and the demographics of who are arrested? Since the district started teaching remotely, have any parents provided virtual training on cyber, been provided virtual training on cybersecurity? If so, was it language appropriate? These are questions that come to mind when equity is to be considered. Collecting the right data does help. In the engagement in the budget process, I understand participation begins and ends with the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. This is a quote from staff. But we do not know who is on the committee. Agencies, yes, but not people. A priority should be for parents, grandparents, foster parents, or guardians of students in the district. Do they come from high, high need areas, low-performing schools? Do they represent people in poverty? The convoluted process described for gathering information could be simplified if we just know that parents and poor people of color are represented on these communities, on these committees. If they are not, then a positive recruitment should take place so the most in need families are represented. Otherwise, the committee is not representative of the district. And talking about data perspectives, and the more, and more untargeted interventions, I'm looking forward to, to hearing about that. Much has been said about the achievement gap, or what some call an opportunity gap. I call it an income gap. Consider if students live in poverty. Do they attend a below-average school defined by GreatSchools.com? Do they attend a school with inexperienced teachers? Are an adequate number of A through G classes offered, and is the number based on school population so that it is numerically feasible for anyone who wants to achieve completion of their A through G can? My children had to go to Wilson because Cabrillo did not offer what they needed to complete their A through G, so I know there is major, there are major discrepancies between schools. In the school emotional learning discussion, I wonder how many teachers and counselors are practicing their impulse control, empathy, and ethical responsibility when dealing with students of color and disabled students? Some teachers fear their students, especially in middle and high school, a large Black, Latino, or Pacific Islander male who is stressed or emotional or excited. And I have two sons, and high school sons or boys are always stressed, emotionally excited. How many staff overreact with discipline because of their fear? All the onus should not be on parents or students. I know you will reflect on what we can do to react differently. I know you are considering all factors, but the elimination of poverty could and should be a consideration in the equity discussion. You are already doing this when you teach your Head Start children 400 English words so they can get a head start in school. You do this for adults so parents can learn English. Sorry. Thank you. That was the time of, yeah, it's hard to read fast and then read slow so they could translate. Thank you.
Thank you. After Christine Kelly, we have Susan Garcia.
Good evening, Board members and Executive Staff. I'm Dr. Chris Kelly, and I'm president of the Teachers Association of Long Beach. I'm pleased, I'm here today to speak on behalf of the 3,400 students that are teachers that I represent, and I'm pleased we came to an agreement on the flexibility for our ETK 12 teachers. This action alone will eliminate the potential for dozens, if not hundreds, of cases of COVID-19 infections. Unfortunately, we were unable to provide the same protection for our teachers working with our youngest students. Agreeing to that MOU was a gut-wrenching experience for our bargaining team and our executive board. It has been compared to Sophie's Choice. Which baby do you choose? So this evening, I'm here with a large, in a large gathering for the first time since March. As an old, overweight cancer survivor, I'm here to support our Head Start, CDC, EduCare, and Buffem teachers. These agencies all work with our very youngest children. Many of our Buffem students are medically fragile. It is, it was first thought that children did not contract COVID-19. We now know this is not true. The American Academy of Pediatrics reported that 406,109 students have tested positive for COVID-19. These are only the reported cases. Children represented 9.1% of all cases. The overall rate is 538 cases per 100,000 children in the population. After only a couple of weeks, being open, EduCare was closed to quarantine. They have excellent protocols in place. Children stay in small groups and do not mix, except they all come from different homes with families who work and associate with different people. We have no complaints of, of protocols not being followed, and yet children got sick. I understand the need for childcare for essential workers. They do the jobs that keep the community functioning. However, some of these programs are half-day, which would not help a full-time employee, and many of their parents do not work. And although I realize the need to have children actively engaged in learning, it should not be a health risk to those students, their staff, or the families. I suspect the CCT program at Buffem is the driving force to keep these programs in person. This program will be another feather in LBUSD's cap. If this is the case, for now, it needs to be adapted to virtual to protect the health of those students, their teachers, and their families. We cannot value accolades over people's health. Because of the ages they teach, these educators are often thought of and treated as childcare. In fact, many of our early childhood educators have years of experience and are college-educated with bachelor's and master's degrees. Most are women of color. We know this population is at greater risk of serious complications, requiring them to continue providing in-person teaching when many of their students already participate in a virtual format sends a negative message to our communities and to these teachers about how they are valued. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have another one for Jerleene Tatum. So she wants, oh, she wants to talk on, okay. And then, excuse me, Susan. Jeff, Jerleene is up again? Go ahead. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Education members and LBUSD executive staff and, and others. My name is Susan Garcia, and I represent the Jordan secondary area on the executive board of the Teachers Association of Long Beach. The Jordan area includes CAMHS on the west, it includes Hamilton on the east, and it extends down with Hughes on the south, Longfellow, and Los Cerritos. Just giving you the area that I cover. Last night, I was faced with a very difficult decision to either sign off on a flawed MOU or to leave our members currently working at their sites to be exposed without an agreement on safety protocols and other specifics. I elected to provide our membership protocols to make their work safer. Unfortunately, some of our members felt that we threw them under the bus. You see, as a union, we believe an injury to one is an injury to all. That broke my heart because I had to vote the way I did for the better. There is a faction of our membership who can effectively work from home, but they are forced to work at their school sites, and I would extend this to all LBUSD employees. There are others such as CDC, Head Start, EduCare, and Buffem who are required to work with their students. We've already had a shaky start at these sites. Child tested positive for COVID-19, managed to close down all of EduCare, and everyone exposed was quarantined. I hope you will mitigate these system breakdowns which caused this. Here we are in mid-August with only a minute portion of the district open, and you have already had four separate incidents of coronavirus exposures. I wonder what will happen when we have 90 schools open or more? Your track record is not looking good. It does not instill confidence. Back to the MOU. The worksite location by law is established by the employer and cannot be bargained. You, Board of Education members, are the only ones that can override this. We have attempted to appeal to your humanity as a district and as a school board to follow state guidance and to allow all employees who can accomplish their jobs from home to do so from the safety of their homes. The district did a cost-benefit analysis and chose money over people. What will you choose? Board members, Juan Benitez, Diana Craighead, Megan Kerr, John Myers, Felton Williams, please pass a motion tonight for the district to allow all employees who can the flexibility to work from their home or their work site. Do not constrain us to an alternative work agreement that fixates us to what we have.
Sorry. Ms. Garcia, you're out of time.
Okay. Well, thank you.
That was two minutes. Thank you. And then Eric Miller? Eric Miller?
Yes, I am back. Jerleene Tatum, Long Beach Unified School District parent. Today, when I watched the workshop, it left me with so many different emotions, and all I could think about was cognitive dissonance because I was from one end of being happy learning or paying attention and noticing that the district is, has a plan for equity, but listening to how the plan was coming out of a system that has part of, that is part of the problem. And so I wanted to address a few things. One, something that I heard, and I don't, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see. So I don't know if Dr. Benitez is in here. I know online today, he was, he was online via Zoom. Something that I noticed, and I've noticed it repeatedly, is the sarcasm from staff when addressing Board Member Benitez. Now, I know he's grown and he can advocate for himself if he chooses, but to see that is complete disrespectful, not only to him but to the community, because as a board member, he is here to advocate and be a voice. Because as a board member, he is here to advocate and be a voice for me, my children, and the rest of our children. So when the sarcasm, whether it's a joke or not, we sense it, we notice it. And when he's asking questions, I felt like he was reading my mind, asking questions that I had. So I don't know, you know, again, we talk about equity. Can we make sure that it's displayed coming up out of here? Something that was, it warmed my heart but hurt my heart, was listening to the conversation about the book club. So a couple of things. I want to say to the beautiful Black Queens that helped facilitate that book club conversation, thank you. Thank you for being brave enough to do it. And I want to say to the non-Black people who participated in that, please don't allow that to be performative action. And I also want to say, you can't learn about the Black experience from a book. So keep that in mind as you get ready to move into spaces and having conversations about equity with people, Black people and na, and other people of color. Please remember, it's not something that can come out of a book. And again, can you please make sure that as you're addressing the systemic racism, that your decisions moving forward actually reflect the policies that you talk about putting in place? Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar?
Hey, everybody. It's always weird to step into a room with everybody has on masks and you don't, but that's a whole different thing. As you all know, my name's Eric Miller, and before my candidacy that everybody's familiar with, I was just another young Black boy who went through this district. And as I stand before you today, I want to make sure that I preface my statements with saying that I hope that this is not misconstrued as a political play, as we've probably seen from some others. But this is just an opportunity to voice my opinions as a father. So with this global pandemic, there's been a number of things that you've also had to deal with in conjunction with that in regards to the recession and the social unrest. And so I personally have been very proud of the great work that you all have done, even though I may not have agreed with most of the decisions made. And so I just wanted to applaud both the school district and all the decision-makers for all of your hard work. As we go through this space, I also wanted to make sure that we are aware of the bigger issue that is often forgotten as we talk about how we uplift our school district. And those are our young Black and Brown boys in the second district. Unfortunately, this demographic has been under-recognized and under-utilized for many years now within our district. And I want to make sure as you all go through this decision-making process, that we continue to keep those young men in mind. As I stand here, yes, I have future ambitions, but I also want to make sure that we continue to remember that I am just a young man who wants nothing but the best for this next generation. And I know that you all want that as well. So I ask that, as I stand here in solidarity with my fellow parents, teachers, and friends that work within the district, that we continue to work for what is best for our young men and young women. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Hello. My name is Caesar Manderes. I live in Long Beach, and I'm a high school teacher in a different district at Downey Unified. We started school last week, and the district is giving us the option to teach from the classroom or from home. On most days, I teach from the classroom, but I've also taught from home. Given my experiences these past two weeks, I believe that Long Beach Unified has made the right decision by allowing teachers the flexibility to work from home during this pandemic. Many teachers by nature are social creatures with social habits. Over the past couple of weeks, teachers at my school have spent hours collaborating face-to-face. We've eaten lunch together. We've visited each other's classrooms to check up on one another. Some teachers wear their masks religiously, some don't. Some keep their distance, and some get up close to your screen to see what you're up to. It's just the way it is. As someone who has an immune-compromised child, alarms are constantly going off in my head whenever I feel too exposed to the virus. So for me, it's important to have that flexibility to work from home if it ever becomes too overwhelming to work from my classroom. I know many teachers in LBUSD feel the same way, and we all know that a stressed teacher is oftentimes an ineffective one. So LBUSD has made the best decision for our kids by allowing teachers to choose the environment that gives them the most peace of mind. I do hope that the same standard is applied to special education teachers. I now want to say a few words to the Long Beach teachers listening. On a practical note, I want to let you know that Canvas, which is the learning-managing software that you'll use for distance learning, is really helpful. It'll take you a couple of weeks of interacting with the program to learn the basics. You'll have 30 tabs, emails, and YouTube videos open to learn how to use the program, but it does empower you with a set of tools to stay organized and to create engaging lesson plans. You might struggle to learn the system at first, but I've noticed that even the teachers who are allergic to new technology have learned the basics. The key to learning how to use this program is collaboration with other teachers and staff. We have to be there for one another. On a more personal note, if you're anything like me, you've probably felt emotionally off balance since the quarantine started. But I promise you, when school starts, the moment you see your students' faces, even if it's through a screen, you're going to feel whole again. Their resilience and determination to succeed in the face of adversity will spark hope within you. Their curiosity and desire to get to know you will bring you joy, and their smiles will renew your connection to humanity. I've been teaching for 10 years, and this year I've felt as lost and overwhelmed as I did my first year of teaching. But we are teachers. We're creative, intuitive, resourceful, persistent, and most importantly, we will do whatever it takes to support and love our students. Keep advocating for our children. We got this. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next, Angela?
Hi. My name is Laura Kurtz. I'm a parent in this district, but I'm also a special education teacher in this district. And I'm here today representing the pre-K teachers from Buffem TLC and also the speech therapists. At the last board meeting, the executive staff announced that all teachers would be teaching online until October 5th, based on the fact that it was not safe for our students to return to school until that time. Now we're finding out that we are to start school September 1st in person with students. Our students are young and just naturally do not social distance, but they also have pre-existing conditions that make it not safe for them to be there. Health guidelines have capped our classes at eight, but we're doing multiple sessions. So if you do the math, that is 256 students that could possibly be at Buffem. We're not talking about opening a small in-home daycare. We're not talking about opening daycare, all-day daycare for essential workers. We're talking about opening a school. And along with these students, these 256 students, come approximately 88 staff members. It's pretty hard to social distance when you have that many people on campus, and that's not even counting the multiple Head Start classrooms that are also going to be in person and the Assessment Center. I'm here today because I'm pleading with the Board of Education to please allow us the same health guidelines that you're allowing all the other teachers and all the other students in our district. We really want the "all" to mean "all," not just, not "us." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then Sokhia?
Hello. Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Angela Merrill, and I'm a high school teacher at Wilson. I have been extremely stressed and concerned by the nature of work that I find myself in come September 1st. While I do understand the need to commit to my full attention to my work, which anyone who knows me knows that I exceed any requirements or expectations of the job we're asked to do, during a pandemic, I would expect that my employer would show a bit of grace and concern as to what's happening at home. I'm not asking for a break. I'm not asking for less work. I'm not asking for the expectation of my duties to be modified, except to accommodate the needs of my students and the needs of my own family as we navigate this unprecedented time. I'm asking two things: allow for asynchronous learning for students, and allow teachers to tend to their children from the safety of their own home. We know, as educators, that the amount of screen time that you are expecting our students and our teachers exceeds any reasonable necessity of rigorous learning. I'd like to turn to author Douglas Fisher, Nancy Frey, and John Hattie of the Distance Learning Playbook, all with educational leadership PhDs, who say, "Teachers and students have experienced the Zoom exhaustion that comes from too many hours trying to sit still and remain engaged in front of a screen. Some schools initially tried to replicate school in real time using schedules that were designed for face-to-face instruction. They quickly found that five or six hours of daily instruction, complete with the same bell schedules, recess breaks, and lunch schedules, was not workable. One reason is because homes don't run on a school schedule, and the burden placed on families made it nearly impossible for them to manage. Another is that our own homes don't work that way either." This book was purchased by the district for some teachers. Have you read it? "I'm the mother of a two-year-old and the family member of those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19. My parents are in a dangerous age bracket, and my siblings and I have pre-existing conditions that can put us at higher risk if we become infected. If I send my child to daycare, that means that my daughter, who will most likely remain healthy herself, will become a carrier of COVID-19 and risk the health of my family. The other option is to go the entire school year without my daughter seeing her aunts, uncles, or grandparents. Alternatively, if I do what I did from March to June in pre-recording all lessons, remaining 100% accessible for student interaction via email or message, providing real-time video feedback, I will be able to give my students the education they deserve while also be able to change my daughter's diaper. I also held live Zoom sessions in the role of ed tech coordinator, a position that, due to budget constraints, has been untimely cut, for the multiple hours assisting my colleagues in the tech applications of distance learning, all during my daughter's nap times. I would hope that you would treat me as the professional I am and provide the trust that I will do my job and do it well. Thank you."
Thank you. And then Mariella?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sokhia Pai. A LBUSD parent, listening to many board meetings, and this two-day Board of Education workshop, I can, I can't help but wonder why, even though Long Beach has the largest Cambodian population outside of Cambodia, we are still invisible in the strategic framework of community engagement, school, and LBUSD employees, board representation. If you go, if you can look around the room, if you see a Cambodian representation here, and equity agenda being discussed, then I realize that someone has to be here before you to advocate for my two kids, my family, and the Cambodian community, not representing the Cambodian community. Don't get me wrong, but I advocate for my kids. Speaking of equity, according to a glossary of education of the Great School of Partnership, and I quote, "It has been said that equity is the process; equality is the outcome, given that equity, what is fair and just, may not, in the process of educating students, reflect strict equality what is applied, allocated, and distributed equally. As an indigenous Khmer parent, in Khmer culture, when our language is excluded, it is the biggest insult to the whole community and ethnicity. When our language is excluded, it leads to the loss of equal and equitable opportunity and rights to pursue economic, educational, civic, social, and governmental services. No or lack of language access and inclusion, there is no realization of today and tomorrow community engagement and solutions. Language and representation exclusions to the need of one community is a form of systemic and institutional racism, whether it's done consciously or unconsciously. I talked to so many Cambodian LBUSD parents, including my wife, whose English is not their first language, who call me every day and express their desperate needs for more Khmer language access inclusion, Khmer bilingual and culturally competent teachers in school, and Khmer representation in the LBUSD, however, they don't know how and what to do and have not received detailed information about school opening, safety, and support information in Khmer, including the simultaneous interpretation during the Board of Education yesterday and today. I would like to request the LBUSD to increase Khmer language access inclusion, hire more Khmer bilingual speaking, speaking and culturally competent employees and teachers, and Khmer representation among the Board of Education for more diverse and inclusive community. For, speaking of more diverse and effective community engagement, I would like to request the LBUSD to partner and allocate the title one federal budget for the Cambodian and other underserved cultural, underrepresented, undercommunicated community in Long Beach."
Excuse me, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. She is our last speaker.
Madam Chair, how many additional in-person do we have for this item?
We have two more people who have, who are here in person to speak, but we don't have time for them.
Can I move it, since they're here and standing in the heat, to add an additional six minutes to time to allow for the last two speakers who are here?
I don't know if we need a motion or just a consensus.
You have one more.
Okay. Nod your head if you're okay. Oh, I got a thumbs up over here. Nod your head. We're good. Six minutes.
Got six minutes. There's two more speakers, and we're out of time.
Yeah, they've been waiting in the heat. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go with, excuse me, Mariella. Jeff?
Yeah.
Lynn? Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Mariella Salgado. Yesterday, I shared the story of how a school site staff undermined parental involvement. At the core, there was a lack of transparency and accountability, and the truth is, this isn't the only site. The district wants to discuss equity. Let's start with listening to parents and distribution of power. For example, today, we heard an hour-long presentation about a book club inception and discussed books on racism, white supremacy, and equity. While I recognize these conversations need to happen and truly appreciate their valiant efforts, those tough conversations, in fact, should have happened long before George Floyd. The presentation took place in lieu of the 15-minute presentation the Children's Defense Fund asked of the district, a voice for community stakeholders, which includes parents and organizations who have spent thousands of hours, years, to bring equity to our communities. This is one example of many of which the district's actions do not align with their equity plan. That school site needs additional support to ensure we do not exacerbate inequities and opportunity gaps. Right now, you have parents in various groups, either instructing parents how to create learning pods, or a master list, how to hire, to hire substitute teachers, or instructions on how to withdraw from the district. This all reeks of privilege. As a parent, a Parks Commissioner, a member to the Long Beach Early Childhood Education Committee, I understand the need and desire, and in some respects, privilege to make those choices. This pandemic, I'm sorry, I lost my place. As a district, know this is happening and listen to us to mitigate the loss of learning. This pandemic has highlighted our failed systems, and for the district to not take into account what is happening outside the doors is frustrating. This is why LBUSD cannot lead this effort alone. It needs community engagement. It needs transparency. It needs to hold itself accountable, and at times, it needs us to hold you accountable. And why, it's a partnership. We sit here and discuss equity and desire or need for the district to lead this topic. You'll have to excuse me, but when you gave space to a book club to take an hour versus the Children's Defense Fund, the Director of Education Equity, and community stakeholders to present recommendations and discuss data to address achievement gaps, it's contradictory. I came to this country when I was three years old. Spanish was my first language, and by federal standards, I was poor. There were six of us living in a one-bedroom. those tough conversations, in fact, should have happened long before George Floyd. The presentation took place in lieu of the 15-minute presentation the Children's Defense Fund asked of the district, a voice for community stakeholders which includes parents and organizations who have spent thousands of hours, years to bring equity to our communities. This is one example of many of which the district's actions do not align with their equity plan. That school site needs additional support to ensure we do not exacerbate inequities and opportunity gaps. Right now, you have parents in various groups either instructing parents how to create learning pods or a master list to hire substitute teachers or instructions on how to withdraw from the district. This all reeks of privilege. As a parent, a Parks Commissioner, a member to the Long Beach Early Child Education Committee, I understand the need and desire and in some respects, privilege to make those choices. This pandemic, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Um, as a district, know this is happening and listen to us to mitigate the loss of learning. This pandemic has highlighted our failed systems and for the district to not take into account what is happening outside the doors is frustrating. This is why LBUSD cannot lead this effort alone. It needs community engagement, it needs transparency, it needs to hold itself accountable, and at times, it needs us to hold you accountable. And why, it's a partnership. We sit here and discuss equity and desire or need for the district to lead this topic. You'll have to excuse me, but when you gave space to a book club to take an hour versus the Children's Defense Fund, the Director of Education Equity, and community stakeholders to present recommendations and discuss data to address achievement gaps, it's contradictory. I came to this country when I was three years old. Spanish was my first language and by federal standards, I was poor. There were six of us living in a one-bedroom. And why, why, and I stand here because I often think, what would my mother do? What would she do in the world of virtual learning? And while I'll continue to show up because over 70% of our students are Title I students. They were me. Equity is a roundtable. Equity is you accounting for the 20% of students we have not connected with since May. Equity is you differentiate based on the needs of that child. Equity is flexibility. Equity is giving experts in their field their academic freedom. Education is a great equalizer and it will take all of us to give a little, sacrifice a little, to ensure all of our kids have what they need this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, Jeff, next we have Lynn, okay. And then after Lynn, we have Christina.
So, um, I just wanted to, I requested the board consider contacting the current online virtual academies like K-12 or the California Connections Academy and see if they can set up a meeting with our teachers because they have instruction on how to teach online school, they know how to engage the kids. They've been doing this for years and I think that our children and our teachers would benefit from this. A lot of the children and teachers are both struggling on how to use these new tools for teaching that they have never had to use before. So why not pull in these free academies that are public schools, that are online, and utilize their resources, utilize their experiences, utilize everything that they can teach our teachers today? I just, I think it would be very, very beneficial to contact them. My daughter graduated from K-12 and did amazingly well and is on the dean's list in college because of the help that she got from K-12 after moving from a brick-and-mortar school to an online academy. That's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name's Christina Dinaeles and I am talking about Blackboard versus Zoom. I was actually an online school student my last two years of high school and now I'm a college student. And we used Blackboard in K-12. And my experience so far with Zoom is main thing is hacking. We've had so many hackers and say really disturbing things that I really don't think is very inappropriate for K-12 especially, especially kindergarten, kindergarten should not be hearing the things that we heard. Um, but I think that specifically that right now people and especially college and teachers that, um, oh, it's hot in here. Should learn from teachers that are used to being, doing things online like, um, virtual academies that are educated in specific terms to be able to do that. And what so far I liked about, um, Blackboard was that was more interactive, that the teacher could set the boundaries and allow students, hey, can you write on the blackboard, but it has to be appropriate? And if it wasn't, it could be automatically deleted by the teacher. And, um, we didn't get to be all on virtual, like all on camera at once. And my experience so far with Zoom is that it creates slowness in the internet activity for doing that. And plus, K-12 students, I don't think all need to be on camera at once. So, um, yeah, and Blackboard also is required to be recorded and that actually stops bullying. What my experience was that even if a teacher was bullying another student, it was caught on recording and could be immediately reported by the student or teacher or, um, parents of the student. And I think that, um, my experience especially of being bullied by teachers, not by students. And it helped stop that, slow it down at least. Whereas Zoom can be a choice to be recorded or not. And I think I'm running out of time. But, um, yes, I definitely think that we need to, Blackboard is also older than Zoom and has been used by online schools a lot longer than Zoom and its difficulties. And I think all of you can have heard of a lot about Zoom lately. But, um, uh, thank you for your time and I really hope it changes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we have online comments, but we don't have time for that. And now we're going back to.
We're going back to the agenda items.
Items listed on the agenda.
Yes. And so far, I have recorded eight minutes and 30 seconds, so I will continue from there.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Nubia Flores Cedeño and I am an LBUSD parent of a fifth grader and I am the parent organizer for Long Beach Forward. Our mission is to create a healthy Long Beach with low-income communities of color by building community knowledge, leadership, and power. This community includes LBUSD parents. We work with groups often not invited to the table to ensure their voices are heard, they can lead change, and our democracy is strengthened. Opportunity and participation in political processes should not be constrained by income or race. And a major part of the political process in our community within our public education system is the community engagement via public comment at our school board meetings. Since the end of the last school year and through the summer, there has been record-breaking number of participants in public comment and that is for several reasons. We are in the midst of unprecedented times due to COVID. Our schools are closed and our systems of learning for our kids has changed. We need to address the systematic racism and lack of access for our Black and students of color and we need to address the issues around accessibility for our students with disabilities. Public comment at these meetings has become essential in voicing parent concerns, asking for meaningful engagement with their elected representatives and LBUSD leadership. Parents need and deserve this space to engage with their elected school board members, to ask questions, provide feedback on policy, comment on issues concerning their children, and address the board in a public forum for the public record. Not all parents will be able to sit on the superintendent advisory committee. All options for meaningful parent and community engagement should be put in place rather than limited. My ask is that you allow all parent and community voices to be heard in as many forms as possible, including here in person, via telephone, via Zoom, or another live virtual platform, and in writing. I also ask that you please increase the time for public comment. Long Beach City Council has adapted their public comment process to allow for live comment. I ask that the LBUSD school board also adapt and create better access for all. Thank you.
The next email is from Jose Beltran. "Let it be on record that I am submitting my public comment via email as it is to be read as I am unable to attend in person due to health concerns. I applaud the board in making an outstanding decision for public comment to be sent via email. Thank you. As we approach a school reopening, I would like the board to look for an alternative and offer it as an option to all teaching staff, certified, non-certified, special education and support staff. The flexibility for teaching from home or in person, having an option for them is crucial to prevent the unnecessary and continued spread of COVID-19. The well-being for the community of Long Beach is at stake."
Dear LBUSD leaders, can we look at getting dual immersion elementary kids back to school first for families that choose in-person? The program does best with in-person immersion. We don't speak Spanish at home and I don't see how this will work with our kindergarten gardener and third grader on a laptop. I do not want to see instruction hours reduced, whether it's in-person or online. I feel the kids need all the teacher's support they can get right now since it will be a little chaotic with the class worth of, class worth of kids all trying to ask questions at the same time, especially when they are speaking a new language. I'm an essential worker that works with COVID testing sites and also a single dad. I would love to see an option for kids learning and having a place to stay at school for parents like me that work. I don't mind paying because I would have to pay for a babysitter anyway. I have faith that you guys will do what is best for our kids and we can do it carefully and minimize the risk of getting sick. Thank you, Mike Costa.
And you know what? Letitia, can we stop there a second? I'm gonna be a little bit unconventional, but we have a gentleman who's waiting outside to speak. He has neglected to sign a paper, but he's 88 years old. It's real hot outside. I, I think we can bring him in. Um, we don't need to stand on ceremony of him, you know, submitting a paper, but he's got a comment to make. So if you could, um, if you could state your name, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Marvin Cummings. I'm a resident of Long Beach. I am in the business of preventing diabetes type 2. I am, I'm not 88, I'm 91 and I'm in great health. I have never been sick in my life. And what I see in this city is a disaster with the health department, with the school board. Long Beach has among the highest rates of diabetes type 2 in America. The health department is doing nothing. I've hassled with those people. You people do what the state lets you do and more has to be done. God bless these guys. They struggle with the price of gasoline, they struggle with the rents, they struggle with the food. If you get diabetes, it's all over. You're gonna end up homeless. And that's the game. What we need is courses, courses, courses. It's gotta be reading, writing, arithmetic, and health. You're not treating it properly. I know, I've spoken to your nurses, your teachers, you're doing a certain amount. You're not doing enough. It's a family deal. You're gonna teach the kids, they have to have product, they're gonna go back to the parents. It's gotta be done on a family basis with, with how to read labels, good foods, the bad foods. What's going on? I'm gonna tell you. I, what I have is not by accident. I have not added sugar or salt in over 50 years. I'm disciplined, my numbers are unbelievable. I just had, I was coming out of a fractured hip, I was in the hospital and I love it when the doctors look at my numbers, they say, wow, I hope I can live to 90 and be your, and have your health. It doesn't happen by accident. The schools have to play a role in it. It's not an occasional situation, it's over and over and over again. And the families have to be involved. So, if I can score any points, great. Anybody who wants to talk to me, I'll be waiting outside for a few minutes. I'm in the, I do very well, uh, I'm saving lives. I can say I can do, we have seminars. I get up, well, we don't do it anymore with COVID, we're doing different things, but usually I'll talk, prevention, give out a flyer, and then a person will use a finger stick to tell them what their situation is. If their numbers are wrong, we just tell them to see a doctor. We're not involved in medication, treatments, anything else. And saving lives is cheap. You can save a life for $10. If you're on dialysis, the government will pay $80,000 a year for you if you get on dialysis. The whole system is politics. I hate that, I love it. There's no money for prevention because the pharmaceutical people want you sick. And that's the game, unfortunately. God bless you all. I'll be sitting outside, anybody who wants, anybody who wants to be the health board of directors, I'll make you the health board of directors and I'll show you how to get votes. Nice to talk to you people. Take care of yourself.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, Letitia, we'll resume our online comments.
Okay, this, this next email comes from a concerned preschool SDC teacher. Hello, I'm requesting my email to be read in front of the board meeting today. My first time attending a board meeting was in 2007 when my name was added to the board agenda as a special education teacher in LBUSD. Now I'm coming back to the board asking for help as a preschool education teacher. At the last board meeting, my colleagues spoke about giving special education students a seat at the table. Just to clarify, I believe that she was asking the board to consider all special education students when making decisions about their education. Now, special education has a seat at the table and that seat is reserved for preschool special education students and teachers. It has been decided that ETK through 12 needs to start school virtually due to COVID, but preschoolers are at the same risk for the same reasons. Somehow, all ETK through 12th grade teachers have the flexibility to choose their work location, but Buffham staff are being required to physically go back to work in person with students. The district is opening more CCT programs at the preschool level and since Head Start and CDC programs are currently open, the rationale is that preschool special education students need to be in school too. We are hearing that Head Start, Young Horizon, and EduCare programs have recently been closed for quarantine due to positive COVID cases being reported. These programs have been using the safety protocols and procedures that the district has set in place. I tested positive for COVID this summer without any symptoms and if I was not following the strict safer-at-home guidelines, I would have infected all of my colleagues and family members. The preschool teachers and students' lives are being compromised by sending them back to school in person during this unprecedented time. The Board of Education is our last hope to try and figure out what is going on and help us find solutions to make it equitable for all students in Long Beach Unified. Thank you for your time.
Dear Board of Education members, I'm writing to you as a parent and an educator in LBUSD of 30 years. In these unprecedented times, I realize it is difficult to prioritize what is needed the most in order to best help our children to continue to learn and keep them safe. However, I am having a difficult time understanding how it is not safe enough for TK 12 students to attend in person, but it is okay to send back our preschool population and their teachers, support staff, and service providers. A death is a mistake that cannot be undone. While we all value the importance and impact in-person learning provides, we have had to all adjust to this new normal. At your last board meeting, the district's executive staff announced multiple times that all teachers would be providing online instruction until October 5th. Since when has the meaning of all been changed to all but not you? We humbly request that you treat our lives with the same equity, humanity, and safety you are affording the TK through 12 students and teachers in LBUSD. Larry Lee Kurutz.
The next one is from Amy McVeigh. "As an LBUSD parent of two young girls, five and eight years old, I am highly against having them sit in front of the computer screen for five to six hours a day. I know that LBUSD teachers are working hard to prepare for this upcoming year. I am absolutely relieved to hear that teachers have the choice to teach from their classrooms or their home. Bravo, LBUSD. Teachers certainly have the knowledge and creativity to virtually teach our children for a short time and then assign independent work which parents or caretakers can assist with off-screen. My five-year-old's teacher for TK pre-recorded herself reading stories and sent the link so we could watch at our leisure. She also provided many worksheets and activities for us to do. My eight-year-old's second-grade teacher held one-hour virtual lessons throughout the week in addition to assigning reading, bookwork, and extra resources for us to check out online. I understood, I understand that the upper grades are more complex, but I have a great deal of confidence that our teachers can divide the screen time up with hands-on activities, reading physical books at home, writing assignments, math work on paper, and physical fitness ideas to keep our children off-screen. According to the New York Presbyterian, excessive screen time can inhibit children's abilities to develop language abilities to develop language, learn how to effectively communicate and interact with others, decrease their performance on reading tests, may show deficits in attention. I'll be honest, it's hard to keep my girls off the screen, but setting a timer helps both myself and them to limit their screen time. I noticed that the longer they watch during one sitting, the harder it is to pull them away, and the worse their behavior is: tantrums, aggressiveness, anger, et cetera. Please help us keep the next generation by reducing the amount of screen time required for our students. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Candace Coach, and I am a preschool special education teacher. I am also one of the ten teachers being placed in a Head Start CDC CCT program beginning September first. As I read that my ETK through twelve colleagues have been granted the flexibility to choose their working location while teaching virtually, I am happy. I am happy they are going to be given a choice. Unfortunately, this isn't the case for us preschool special education teachers. We are expected to return to our classrooms and teach students in person. Even with the safety protocols in place, some of these programs have been closed due to positive COVID nineteen cases. All we are asking is for the same flexibility granted to our colleagues. If school is not safe for ETK through twelve, it is not safe for preschool. Thank you for your time, Candace.
The next one is Judy Carey. My name is Judith Carey, the parent of a high school teacher, and my comment is in reference to today's agenda, item number twenty-five. Public comment is a critical component of these board meetings, and I urge you to vote in favor of maintaining the current process of allowing key stakeholders to submit comments via email rather than requiring people to make comments in person beginning September second. Taub represents teachers, and each one of you represents parents and caregivers and students. If you vote to cut off our ability to communicate virtually during this pandemic, you no longer represent any of us in the true sense of the process. The baseline to change this process should be the health and safety standards applied to the return of school on a full-time basis. As long as there is data supporting safer-at-home practices statewide, public comment should be allowed to be made virtually. I am requesting that you vote in favor of maintaining the current procedures until all staff, children, and young people can safely return to school. In addition, I'm requesting that you consider adding into this vote that no board member shall share social media or texts received outside of public comment timeframes. Board members engaging in these activities should refer their friends to the board's voted-on-public-comment processes or risk Brown Act violations. Thank you very much for considering this information before you vote today. Finally, thank you for all the hard work district administrators have done, day in and day out, to create the best possible scenarios for our schools in light of our current landscape.
This is from Rachel Baraona. Hello, I'm a special education teacher, early childhood education specialist. I am proudly starting my fourteenth year with LBUSD, and this is my first major concern. I appreciate your time and consideration of my request. I am writing in response to the recent MOU which states that there is a need for school closure in order to prevent the spread of illness arising from the coronavirus. It is stated that it is not safe for general education students K through twelve to start the school in person, and therefore, schools will be online until October. This decision seems counterintuitive when the same MOU expects our youngest and most vulnerable students to return to live instruction. Allow me to share some of the common characteristics of the students we serve at Buffham Total Learning Center, a preschool that specializes in working with students with special education needs. This is a student population who are less likely to wear a mask, less likely to cover a cough, less likely to use a tissue, less likely to keep most things out of their mouth. This is a student population who require adult physical assistance to walk safely in the community and through the school. This is a student population who still greatly benefit from physical assistance with self-help skills like toileting, eating, washing hands. Most importantly, this is a student population who is more likely to have pre-existing and/or multiple health concerns. I ask, how is it safe for this population of students to return to live instruction when the older and more independent student population should not? It should be noted that Head Start, Young Horizon, and EduCare programs were already forced to close due to positive COVID nineteen. I am urging the board to allow Buffham Total Learning Center, CDC, Head Start, and EduCare the same equity to start live with students in October as our general education K through twelve peers and colleagues. This will give us additional time to prepare our learning environments in order to more safely receive our students. Thank you again for your time.
Dear Board of Education and Executive Staff, my name is Jennifer Marches, and I've been employed with the LBUSD since nineteen ninety-one. For all those years except for one, I have worked with our youngest and most vulnerable stakeholders, our preschool-aged children with special needs. I'm writing this letter as public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. Please consider the health and safety of all preschool general education and special education teachers, staff, and students. Close our currently operating preschool programs and do not open Buffham TLC for face-to-face learning at this time. EduCare has been open for approximately one month and is already closed for two weeks because of a COVID exposure. The National Office of Head Start gives local agencies the option to teach virtually. Please support our Head Start and CDC teachers in going virtually until Los Angeles County is off the watch list for two weeks. Our numbers are below eight percent positivity rate, and there are fewer than a hundred cases per hundred thousand people. Opening and shutting our preschool programs will continue to occur until it is truly safe for all of us to go back to face-to-face teaching and learning. It is incredibly difficult for our youngest stakeholders to return to school after school breaks. With constant closures due to COVID nineteen, it will be like teaching day one over and over again throughout the school year, contributing to the trauma many of these children are already experiencing. Finally, do not open Buffham TLC and put our most vulnerable students at risk. Social distancing, mask-wearing, and students covering their sneezes and coughs will not be possible for our special ed preschool students. Many of them need hand-over-hand assistance to simply enter the school. If all truly means all, then we must include early childhood education and special education. Jennifer Marches.
This is Emily Paris-Yi. Please consider in-person attendance for all pre-K students with the health and safety of children and staff in mind. Children cannot learn when the adults are fearful for their well-being. Emily Paris, speech therapist at Buffham TLC.
This is from Judy Reynolds. To the Long Beach Unified School District Board of Education, please consider the health and safety of all preschool general education and special education teachers, staff, and students. Close our currently operating preschool programs and do not open Buffham TLC for face-to-face learning until it is safe for all children to return to onsite education opportunities. EduCare has been open a month and already closed for two weeks because of a COVID exposure. The National Office of Head Start gives local agencies the option to teach virtually. Please support our Head Start and CDC teachers in going virtually until all children return to onsite learning opportunities as outlined by our health department. Opening and shutting our preschool programs will continue to occur until it is truly safe for all to go back to face-to-face teaching and learning. It is incredibly difficult for our youngest stakeholders to return to school after summertime or winter break. With constant closures due to COVID nineteen, it will be like teaching day one over and over again throughout the school year. Finally, do not allow the district to open Buffham TLC, putting our most vulnerable students at risk. Social distancing, mask-wearing, and students covering their sneezes and coughs will not be possible for our special ed preschool students. Many of them need hand-over-hand assistance to simply enter the school, and a large percentage of the students have underlying health issues as well, which makes them and their teachers more vulnerable. If all truly means all, then that includes ECE and special ed. Thank you for your time, compassion, and listening ears. A concerned staff member.
Hi, I'm a special education preschool teacher, starting my twenty-fourth year with this district. I have always been proud to work for LBUSD and respected the way they put students and teachers first every day. The district recently came to an understanding with our teachers and are allowing flexibility in the working conditions for the safety of its employees. However, this does not apply to all the teachers in the district, preschool teachers. Safety concerns should be mandated to all teachers in LBUSD, and we should all have equal opportunities to be safe while teaching. Not only am I a teacher, but also a caregiver for the elderly in my family. How selfish and irresponsible is it for the LBUSD to put my whole family at risk during a global pandemic that has no end in sight? I should not have to be in constant fear of spreading COVID nineteen to my parents and in-laws every time I return from work. I hope the Board of Education and LBUSD hears our concerns and will do what is right for all teachers. Thank you. Amy Iwasaki.
I am writing in support of school closure for all students until safe. I understand IDEA and the laws that are in place to give equal access to education for all students. These laws were created without the foresight or imagination that we would encounter an indiscriminate, highly communicable disease and pandemic. The laws are there to protect children and those who work with those students. We can't take the humanity out of our decisions to follow a law which could seriously impact the lives of families like mine. Although my story isn't impacted by COVID nineteen, it was a much less serious virus that changed our lives. My nephew was born with Down syndrome. It was a shock and then a huge blessing. However, as is common for children with Downs, he had heart issues that needed to be fixed. Just as he started talking at one and a half years old, he went in for surgery. There was a complication during intubation because of a structure in his trachea, which led to an emergency tracheotomy. Then he stopped eating, so a G-tube was necessary. His parents, both teachers, were determined that he would have a life without living in a bubble, so they got him into an SDC. He became the star of the class. By the end of his second year, at age five, he caught the flu from someone at school, and his body couldn't fight it. He couldn't talk, so we didn't know he wasn't feeling well. Eventually, pneumonia set in, and everyone at Children's Hospital of Orange County tried to save him, but there was no way to stop the infection, and he was just living on machines. He died that summer before his sixth birthday. To say that a light leaves the world is an understatement for a family who loses a child because the darkness they have to face every day is unsurmountable. Thank you for listening. Gratitude, Jonathan Jones, Behavior Intervention Assistant at Buffham.
This is Michael Mierowitz. As a speech-language pathologist, I care deeply for my preschool students and want to see them make progress. Right now, the best way to do that is via virtual learning. Although there are drawbacks to virtual sessions, there are ways to make it effective. If we return to in-person instruction in the middle of this pandemic, I will not be able to ensure either academic progress or student safety. Preschoolers in special education are the most likely to need support with academic and transition activities, and the least likely to independently be able to cover their mouths, stay physically distant, or otherwise protect themselves from becoming infected with this virus and carrying it home to their families. All school programs should be virtual only in this moment to minimize community spread, and sending preschool programs back for in-person instruction is a dangerous and counterproductive measure that will ultimately delay our ability to return to the safe in-person instruction that we all truly want. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Siobhan Watson-Harden, and I am a dedicated early Head Start teacher of LBUSD who absolutely loves the relationships built with our smallish learners and their families. The recent MOU agreement that excludes some teachers and staff is unacceptable. Looking at the demographic, more specifically race, of the population of the staff and children being serviced in these excluded area, it leads one to question, why is one set of employees deemed more important when it comes to life and death or safety than others? Head Start has more so-called stringent safety measures, but as we see in the news publications with the closure of EduCare, COVID has and will continue to find its way into sites and infect people, staff and children. What will it take for all means all to actually mean that? Will it take a death of an employee forced to conduct in-person instruction who has contracted this deadly virus at a LBUSD site, leaving families devastated? If money is an issue which is sad to sacrifice and jeopardize certain staff's lives for, Head Start can and is providing virtual home learning while districts still receive funds. The Office of Head Start has given programs the flexibility to operate services virtually to ensure the safety of staff, children, and families first. There are many districts around, including Laco, that is providing services like Head Start and special ed virtually. We are living in a life-threatening pandemic. This is a matter of life and death. No one should be forced to risk their lives. Head Start teachers are professionals who have had degrees in California Commission on Teacher Credentialing Certified. Hold us accountable with providing effective and suitable education for the children we are dedicated to, but don't make us have to choose between life and livelihood. We want to teach, but we want to live more. I cannot teach from the grave, and I cannot provide services to someone in the grave. We are simple, asking for the same life-saving flexibility and choice given to other LBUSD teachers. Please reconsider this MOU. It could possibly save a life or lives. Thank you for your time. Loving Life on Purpose, Siobhan Watson-Harden.
She also submitted a second one.
Oh, that was read earlier.
Oh, it was. Okay.
This is from Myra Enricus. Hello, I thank you for the current changes, but I worry about the CDC, Head Start, Buffham, and pre-K teachers and speech-language pathologists who must return to their sites. As professional as I am, as much as I love and do all I can for my students and their families, going onsite causes anxiety and stress. Being in an environment that feels safe like home will allow me, us, as I speak for others who I know feel the same, to have a clear mind that's not afraid and focus on the students and their families. Please, please listen to all the voices who are asking to stay home to keep themselves and their loved ones safe. I thank you for your time.
The next email comes from Sarah Weiss. I am coming to the board asking for help as a preschool special education teacher. According to the current MOU, it has been decided that to protect our families and teachers, ETK through twelve will be starting school virtually due to COVID. However, even though with credential teachers who are under the same contract as the ETK through twelve teachers and our preschoolers who are the youngest and most vulnerable, we are not being given the same consideration. All ETK through twelfth grade credential teachers have been given the flexibility to choose their work location, while Buffham staff are being required to physically go back to work in person with students. The district is opening additional collaborative co-teaching programs at the preschool level, and since Head Start and CDC programs are currently open, the rationale is that preschool special education students need to be in school too. With this in mind, I believe it is important to bring up that Head Start, Young Horizon, and EduCare programs have recently been closed for quarantine due to positive COVID cases being reported. These programs have been using the safety protocols and procedures that the district has set in place. In contrast to the typical peers in this program, our special education population are less likely to wear masks, will need will need hands-held to navigate the school sites safely, and require physical assistance with toileting, eating, and washing hands. Not to mention, this student population is more likely to have pre-existing conditions or multiple health concerns. How is it safe for this population and their teachers to return to live instruction when older and more independent students are not? The preschool teachers and students' lives are being compromised by sending them back to school in person during this unprecedented time. The Board of Education is our last hope to try and find solutions to make it equitable and safe for all students and staff in Long Beach Unified. Allowing Buffham Total Learning Center, CDC, Head Start, and EduCare the same equity as the rest of our general education, ETK through 12, peers and colleagues to start live on October 5th will provide more consistency and stability for our students rather than opening and closing schools unnecessarily. This additional time will help everyone better prepare their learning environments in order to more safely receive our youngest and most vulnerable students. Thank you for your time and consideration, a concerned teacher.
This is from Lori Karisal. Hello, I am an SLP who works with preschool kiddos at Buffham. I urge you to reconsider in-person classes. By asking our most vulnerable students to come to class, we put them at risk for COVID-19 and possibly death. Think of these children. Where is your humanity? The decision to reopen Buffham puts us all at risk for COVID-19. You're asking us to face our own mortality. Rethink, reconsider.
To the LBUSD Board of Education, please consider extending equity, flexibility, and safety the district and union members have given the ETK through 12 community to the preschool community. With the pandemic, the special needs population has been affected. We can do better for this group. Educators have an opportunity to do better for this group. But will in-person setting during a pandemic be the only way? If the argument is CDC and Head Start are conducting in-person teaching for typically developing preschoolers, then it should also be offered for preschool special needs students. The National Office of Head Start has given local agencies the option to teach virtually. COVID-19 is still here. There is an alternative. Virtual school is not ideal for our special education population, but it did work for a lot of families. This time around, we know more of what we did and didn't work, and we can adapt to reach those who will need it the most. We met virtually with the students and families because as preschool special needs teachers, we were tenacious. We called, emailed, texted, sent drafts, collaborated with families and service providers. We met virtually in whole groups, small groups, individually, even held a lot of parent-teacher conferences while providing meaningful, asynchronous activities. We know more now of what works and we will continue to help. For many students, this will be their first time being left in someone else's care. Many will be fine, but most will cry, a lot. Now, these scared three-to-four-year-olds will see masks and shields blocking their preschool teacher's comforting face. Please consider, how will that traumatic experience help their social-emotional development? I ask the Board of Education, consider the safety of our vulnerable preschool special needs students, their families, their preschool community of teachers, teaching assistants, speech pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, nurses, librarians, and custodians, and to also take into account their loved ones at home who will also be at risk. Thank you for your consideration. Anna Gueco, Special Education Teacher.
This is from Jessica Cons. I am coming to the board on behalf of Buffham TLC teachers, asking for help and support. According to the current MOU, it has been decided that to protect our families and teachers, ETK through 12 will be starting school virtually due to COVID. All ETK through 12th grade credential teachers have been given the flexibility to choose their work location, while Buffham credential teachers and Buffham CCT teachers are being required to physically go back to work in person with students starting September 1st. The district is opening additional collaborative co-teaching programs at the preschool level. And since Head Start and CDC programs are currently open, the rationale is that preschool special education students need to be in school too. With this in mind, I believe it is important to bring up that Head Start Young Horizon and EduCare programs have recently been closed for quarantine due to positive COVID cases being reported. These programs have been using the safety protocols and procedures that the district has set in place. In contrast to the typical peers in these programs, our special education population are less likely to wear masks, will need hands-held to navigate the school sites safely and require physical assistance with toileting, eating, and washing hands. Not to mention, this student population is more likely to have pre-existing conditions or multiple health concerns. How is it safe for this population and their teachers to return to live instruction when older and more independent students are not? The preschool teachers and students' lives are being compromised by sending them back to school in person during this unprecedented time. The Board of Education is our last hope to try and find solutions to make it equitable and safe for all students and staff in Long Beach Unified. Allowing Buffham Total Learning Center, CDC, Head Start, and EduCare the same equity as the rest of our general education, ETK through 12 peers and colleagues to start live on October 5th will provide more consistency and stability for our students rather than opening and closing schools unnecessarily. At this point, all school teachers were allowed to go back to their classrooms as of 8/17 to prepare for this coming year. Per our administrator, Miriam Garcia, Buffham is not ready for teachers yet. We are being told we have to wait till 8/24 or longer. At the same time, we are being told we start September 1st with students. Administration continues to split Buffham teachers from the rest of LBUS teachers under the same contract. Thank you for your time and consideration, a concerned teacher.
Board of Education and Executive Staff, although I am a Long Beach Unified School District teacher, I am writing this email as a parent in regards to my soon-to-be first-grade daughter. My number-one priority for her is to be happy and mentally well. I want her to enjoy school and learning and all that comes with it. But after looking over the proposed online schedule with its excessive length and intensity, it is way too much. If my daughter has to be in front of or tethered to her Chromebook for six hours each day, I know it will cause my daughter to loathe her learning experience as a first grader and cause her great angst and stress. I'm asking that you keep the screen time, aka synchronous learning time, to the minimum requirements and allow teachers to develop schedules based on their students' and parents' needs. There is no way online learning can replace in-person instruction, even if we try to mimic a real school day with a six-hour non-stop back-to-back schedule. It's just going to cause our children to burn out and develop negative attitudes towards schooling. Please keep in mind that we are all in a pandemic. Children have had so much taken from them already. Do not take their joy of learning too. Thank you. Jennifer Short.
My name is Cynthia Gutierrez and I am a parent of a middle school student at Hughes Middle School. As an educator and parent, I am very concerned about the number of minutes middle school students are expected to be online. During your last meeting that ran late, many of you on the school board were commenting how long the meeting was and based on your facial expressions, you were tired. Imagine having a six-hour board meeting every day, how tired you would be. You are asking children to be online focusing for six hours every day. This is too long. Yes, I read and listened to the district messages, letting us know that there will be relief time built in. I understand that, but do not feel that it will be enough. It is unrealistic for children to look at a screen that long or concentrate on work while they are sitting at home alone. They are not wired to be on task that long, especially not being supervised. I urge the board and district to go two-block scheduling or figure out a way to limit the time being online for all students. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Eduardo Lara. I reside in zip code 90802 and write to share remarks on today's school board meeting agenda, item 25, regarding public comment at board meetings. The bedrock of any functioning democracy is the right of the people to engage in discourse with their elected officials. Unfortunately, our democracy has been weakened in the last three years due to a political climate that has eroded public trust in our government institutions. The effects of such erosion of trust and civic engagement with elected leaders has filtered down to the local level, including school boards. This agenda item is an opportunity for LBUSD to both broaden and deepen communication avenues with community stakeholders. Recognizing that the COVID-19 pandemic has created some initial challenges with how to best engage the public during board meetings, enough time has elapsed for the board to create more options for the public to comment on agenda items. I stand firm in uplifting the community's request for extended time for comments and options for submission. Participants should rest assured that all future board meetings should include read comments submitted via email, in-person comments, and an option for the public to call in with their comments. Technology allows for this last option. There's a bit of irony that I must underscore in this statement. The board oversees a school district of 72,000 students, students who also receive social studies education. One of the learning outcomes of a robust social studies education program is to create civically engaged youth who are intrinsically motivated to participate in democracy as agents of change. The board must do better in leading and modeling behavior reflected of what they expect from civically engaged students. Creating more options for public comment strengthens the bedrock of a functioning democracy and serves an important lesson to our students. Their voices matter. Eduardo Lara, Ph.D., Lecturer of Sociology.
This is from Marta Cota, Founder, Executive Director of Latinos in Action. Dear Ms. Craighead, I am writing to follow up on the request we made a few weeks ago that you and the board consider continuing to read the comments sent by email, considering that many families cannot attend for the reasons described previously on August 5th. Thank you.
In regards to Head Start and early Head Start teachers being used for childcare for LBUSD employees, the Head Start Act prohibits providers from spending federal Head Start dollars for services to families that are not eligible. Most district employees would not be eligible for Head Start programming because they need to fall below the poverty guidelines to be serviced. There are heavy consequences for unauthorized use of Head Start dollars. Under federal law, if a childcare center misuses Head Start funds, it can lose its legal status and permits and can be disbarred from receiving federal grants or contracts. Grantees that use resources to provide care for the children of frontline workers would be jeopardizing their funding and licensure status. Thank you. Concerned Head Start teachers, Christina Stretts.
This is from Lisa Quijuitz. Please read. Good evening, board members. Thank you for reading my comment. Due to quarantine, I am unable to attend in person. Why am I considered an essential worker? All means all. I am a teacher with the EduCare program. I teach using the creative curriculum, second step, self-regulation, and feelings, conscious discipline, and prepare students for kindergarten. I do this with KWL charts, bubble maps, and narrative retells, story maps, SEAL strategies to build on language development. We are working very hard to close the achievement gap in our students. This can all be done virtual to keep everyone safe. I am teaching virtual now and my students are engaged in learning every day. Please give us the right to make a choice on where to teach. Our safety or health in our lives matter as well as the families we serve. I am scared every night before I sleep that not only for me, as well as the families, could get COVID-19. It's life or death. I choose life. I have two small grandchildren that are two and two months old. I want to see them grow up. I am scared I won't with COVID-19. I haven't seen them either. I am a district employee and all means all. Please help and keep us safe at home and give us the choice. Please help to change the MOU to include Head Start, CDC, EduCare, special education staff, and the right of flexibility in our teaching from home where it is safe. Thank you.
Public comment process, item 25 on the agenda. My name is Valerie and I am a Long Beach parent. I am here to talk about why public comments matter to our community. In response to requests from the community to provide opportunities for live comment through Zoom or telephone, the district eliminated the public's opportunity to submit any written comments and is limiting public comment to in-person only. This will severely limit public participation and is disrespectful to me as a parent and to numerous other parents that cannot get here due to limited transportation or health reasons. The Harvard Law School Center for Health Law and Policy Innovation states that, one, public commenting is an important opportunity to have your voice heard. Two, public commenting is an opportunity to influence or change any rule or regulation. Federal or state agencies are required to consider public comments before making final decisions. Number three, public commenting is a chance to point out issues, offer alternatives, and substitute language and help decision-makers identify solutions they may not have initially considered. Number four, public commenting is an important way to share my expertise as the issues involved may be complexed. For example, provide data, facts, or stories from the community. Number five, public commenting ensures that on-the-ground experiences are taken into account. Number six, public commenting helps decision-makers determine the level of acceptance or resistance in the public. Number seven, public comments also create a record that lawyers can use to challenge harmful rules. We are in the 21st century and technologically advanced. The pandemic forced us to be in our homes, but it has also allowed us the opportunity to reimagine public engagement at school board meetings. By limiting us to having our public comments read in person only, LBUSD is not providing us with meaningful engagement. LBUSD is illegally giving us a false choice between our health and safety and meaningful engagement. There are many people who can't be here in person today whose voices won't hear because they have health concerns arising from the pandemic. My ask is that you allow all parent and community voices to be heard in as many forms as possible, including here in person, via telephone, via Zoom, or another live virtual platform, and in writing. Thank you for listening. Valerie Ammons.
That concludes all of the testimony we have.
Okay. Thank you. Staff report, we have none. Business items, personnel.
Yes, Madam Chair. I have the personnel report prepared by Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. David Zaid, and approved by the Superintendent, Dr. Cheryl Baker. I'll read the classified portion of the report first. There were 31 appointments, 13 leases of absence, five resignations, five retirements. For the certificated portion, there were 61 appointments. For the certificated portion, there were sixty-one appointments, seventy-one in-service changes, two leaves of absence, one separation, two resignations, eight retirements. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor with a roll call vote, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that's unanimous. Instruction.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I know it's been a long meeting, but if I could just ask Dr. Cale really quickly to speak to the medical Spanish healthcare patient care course that was approved. This is the busiest time for people writing courses, and I don't want to miss that there is some important work that's happened that's being approved in the instruction report, especially around special education classes and science classes. But, Dr. Cale, if you could just speak to that one class quickly, would be great.
Absolutely. This medical Spanish healthcare patient care course is a third-year Spanish class that's going to be offered at Wilson High School. It integrates career and tech ed with academics, and it's going to focus on communication skills needed to work in the healthcare industry. So, the vision is that the courses build on one another, so this is the third in a series, and it will give our graduates a unique set of skills that they can offer directly to employers when they're going out into the health and medical field. And I just want to give a shout out to Amy Pendre, who worked on this course. She's also leading our efforts in Canvas, so the multi-talented Amy Pendre. And coming in to replace her, we'd like to welcome Terry Hauser, who's going to take over as a world language curriculum leader.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that's five zero. Finance report, A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that's five zero. It passes five zero. Finance report, B.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 109-1 and 87-100. My husband works for a subcontractor who's done work for the payees.
Okay. All in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that's four in favor with one abstention. Business department report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that's in favor, five to zero. Purchasing and contracts report, A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
I vote aye. That passes five zero. Purchasing and contracts report, B.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in purchasing and contracts report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 109-1 and 87-100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the awardees.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer, oh, all in favor, Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that passes four with one abstention. Superintendent items, we have none. Okay. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, public comment at board meetings. Dr. Baker, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, just quickly. At the request of the board, at the last board meeting, there was a request to have public comment at board meetings as an information action item to address the transition from virtual board meetings to returning to in-person board meetings. So with the background noted on the new business item, staff recommends the return to having in-person public comment with the addition of, as is current practice, forwarding all other written comment to the Board of Education.
Okay. Since it's information item, I assume we can speak.
I'm sorry, it's information action.
Right, so we can speak before a motion is made? Did you want to check and see who wanted to comment?
Did somebody want to? Wait, you mean of the, okay. Would somebody like to comment on that before we have a motion?
I would move approval on it, then open it up for comment.
Okay, so let's have a motion on that?
Move approval.
Second.
And now discussion. And so, Dr. Williams, since you made the motion, would you like to speak to that motion?
Yes. You know, as an African American growing up in America, I know all too well the importance of being heard and would not want to deny anyone that opportunity. I do want to add, however, that the district has, over the years, received praise and acclaim for the way that it's handled its meetings and conducting its meetings to include public comment. That process has worked well over the years. Now, if that process needs to be changed, it would be my recommendation to have the superintendent's advisory committee with his district-wide representation review it and bring back recommendations to the board for consideration.
Okay. Would somebody like to further discuss this motion? Dr. Benitez?
Yes, Madam President, I think these extraordinary times call for extraordinary measures. Community members have many, many reasons that they are unable to participate in person in our public comment process. I currently am participating remotely. There are many, many challenges. These are challenging times, and I think as a board, as a school district, we need to uphold our commitment to civic engagement and provide as many opportunities, but particularly during these challenging times, for our community members to participate through public comment. It's a way to lift up community voices. It's a way for us to listen to different community perspectives, ideas, questions, recommendations, suggestions. It's a way to inform our own decision-making. And I think by limiting opportunities for public comment, we are limiting opportunities for our public to be engaged, to feel vested in the decisions that we make, and ultimately to have their voices heard. So I think providing opportunities for community members that are unable, it's not that they're unwilling, it's that they're unable to physically come to our board meetings, and again, I'm speaking here because I am unable to physically be there, that we need to provide as many avenues for community members to participate civically in our public comment. And so, I would be against limiting public comment to just being in person.
Okay. Ms. Kerr, did you want to speak to the motion?
I did. I had a couple of suggestions or a couple of things I just wanted to talk through since it's an information item. So, I want to commend the district. I mean, when we had to close really quickly, we were one of the only government agencies that allowed for public comment to continue by making the adjustment to read comments. The Long Beach City Council didn't start taking public comment again till several weeks ago. And so, I want to acknowledge that we knew in the moment that that was an important thing to do, and that was the way at the time that we were able to best accommodate that. And now, we are back meeting. Many of us are here meeting in person, and resuming in-person comment, I think, is important because one of the things we heard is, we want you to hear it in our own voice. And so, providing that option for people to come and have their own voices be heard and to face us, I think, was also very important. So as we look at the whole policy, you know, some of the things I was thinking is, I am glad we're accepting comments by email. I think that's a critical way that people can communicate with us. I would recommend that we continue to do that with that designated email account and that those, that instead of a three o'clock or a three forty-five cutoff, that we consider having a twelve noon cutoff to ensure that those are gathered and put in front of board members to have in front of us, either on paper or a PDF, so that we have that as we consider our conversations here. That way, if we're not reading them out loud, they are still part of the consideration of the work, and they are still a part of the public record when a public record request is made, that they are part of that. That is the case now. They are part of the public record request. But I would suggest potentially having them do earlier so that they can be considered as we look at an item. I would like us actually to research a call-in system similar to the one the city has implemented that would do the same thing. I went to comment on the last city council meeting, not aware, I thought it was a three o'clock cutoff, it was a twelve noon, so I missed my opportunity to queue up to speak to an item. So I'd like staff to do some research around what that would look like and what implementation could be for a phone-in system so that, again, people can be heard in their own voice. I think that raises questions around who gets priority, then? Is it the people who are standing here? Is it the people who called in? A mix of that, so that's another thing that I think is important for us to talk through and consider. I am not opposed to extending the time on evenings when there is robust conversation. I think doing that on a case-by-case basis is important. Our workshop this week was a good example that we had some public comment that needed to be extended at times, and that also that the designated time was sufficient. So I am wanting to be flexible around what that looks like as we continue. I agree that these times are different, and so our approaches need to be considered differently. So in the research of a call system, I know that incurs a cost. Perhaps there's CARES money that could cover that. As you look around, it is so different in here in the amount of technology. So as I consider our tech team realizing that adding another layer is a challenge, and that's not something that might happen overnight, but I would like us to consider that. So again, to recap, that we would have e-comment available that would be in front of board members as we consider what's happening, that we research a call-in option so that folks could queue up to call, as well as those who come in person to be heard, and that we have the times that we have now, but remain flexible when we know that there's a higher engagement level and being cognizant of that and making that available. Again, I think it requires some other conversation, but I'd like to look for us to really look at it in that nuanced way to allow people to participate, to allow people to participate in their own voice in those ways. So those are my comments and suggestions. I don't know where we go in terms of what motion's on the table, but I'd like us to consider those things.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meyer, would you like to weigh in?
No, thank you.
Okay. I would like to add that because we're in the midst of a pandemic, it is very important that we have the option. The people that feel comfortable can come and speak in person. For those who don't feel comfortable to come in, to submit their comments online. I also feel like this needs to be separated out into two motions. To me, one motion would be, do we accept public comment online as we have? And another motion would be in regards to the time. As far as extending our time is concerned, I believe that our first priority is to the business of the district, which sometimes gets lost when we have two hours of public comment. I look at the clock, I see it's after seven. This is our first true item of business. We didn't really go into detail about the other things that we just voted on. We did that rather quickly. But if we have other business, if we have staff reports, if we have communications, if we have anything else, that kind of gets lost in the whole discussion. And I noticed that a lot of the comments were repetitive and redundant, and it feels to me that it's taking away from the business of the meeting. So I would suggest that we have two different motions to vote on. One, that we accept public comment online. And two, we have a separate motion for extending the time. So, Dr. Williams, you were the maker of the motion initially. What would you like to do with that?
Well, the way this is reading, it says public comment at board meetings. And just in terms of what that is stating, I think that needs to be clarified in terms of a motion, because I'm not certain what we're voting on here. I mean, public comment at board meetings, what are we saying? What are we talking about?
So I'm going to ask Brent to join us at the podium. I believe you need to make a friendly amendment to the current recommendation.
Yeah, so just to be clear about what you're voting on, what this item is designed to do is to allow for people who come to be able to speak to you directly in person. And then it also directs staff then to forward to you the emails which were received, and that those emails will be accepted into the public record. So that way, those who wish to speak electronically can speak electronically, and you'll be able to read those people's emails yourselves, but you will hear the people who come to speak. This agenda item does not address how long the public has to speak. The idea, how long the public has to speak on any particular issue is set by the board for thirty minutes and thirty minutes, and this board is always free at any of those board meetings to say, we need more than thirty minutes tonight. We need to expand it by X amount. So I don't think that the motion that you made, Dr. Williams, requires any decision as to how much time is going to be allocated on any particular night. You can continue to do that on an ad hoc basis to decide each night how long you're going to permit. And I see a hand up. Dr. Benitez is raising his hand.
Just to clarify, Brent, so as you're describing it, the emailed public comments would be made available to us, but what I'm hearing is that they wouldn't be read out loud. Am I interpreting that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, my concern with that is that part of the public comment process is so that other community members can hear the public comment. So right now, it would be no different than someone emailing us, and then the assumption made that I'm sure we would commit to, that we are reading the email, but that's different than a public comment being submitted and being read out loud so that the community can also hear what the public comments are.
And I think that is part and partial of my concern as to wanting this to go out for further vetting and coming back with recommendations rather than trying to vote on something that has a number of pieces to it right now.
Well, the way I see it is, we would vote on it on a case-by-case basis. As Ms. Kerr was saying, if we have a meeting where we have a lot of public comment that we feel we need to dedicate more time to that discussion, we can vote on it at that particular meeting. But I feel that we need to make a decision tonight because we have another meeting coming up, and I would like us to have this clarified. As we heard from one of our speakers tonight, there was confusion as to, are we accepting online comments? Are we not accepting online comments? And it was changed, it was changed back. So I think we need to make a decision tonight as far as, would we like to accept online public comment to be read? online public comment to be read?
But that's not what I'm hearing, Madam Chair. What I'm hearing, what I just heard, was that written public comments could be given to us, but those comments do not have to be read. And that is a concern by, by one of our board members, Dr. Benitez, that those comments are not read. And I'm saying, given, given the pieces, that doesn't prevent us from moving forward for our next board meeting, and deciding how we want to handle that. But the bigger picture, and the longer-range picture, is how do we handle all of this collectively going forward? And that's why I want to see it handled properly, by going out to the superintendent's advisory committee and coming back with recommendations.
Okay. Dr. Williams, if, if, if we do that, then could we continue with the practice that we're currently having while our?
No, that's what I just said, Dr. Benitez. I said, let's continue that until, while this is moving forward in that process.
I, I agree with that.
Okay.
I would support that.
Okay. Ms. Kerr?
Okay, but that's not, just a point of clarity, but that's not what the recommendation is. So we have a motion and a second on a recommendation that is different than what was just shared. So when we get to that part, I wanted just to clarify.
And that's why I wasn't clear on what this exactly was all about, in terms of the process. But that process was just explained by Brent, and, and that process is that we would receive written comments, but those written comments would not be publicly stated, but they would be available for the board.
Okay.
And so that was, so in terms of, 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 of putting that piece together, I want to make sure that this is done right.
Yes, I, I agree. We need to make sure that we know exactly what we're voting on. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion on the floor is that we continue to accept online public comment that will not be read at our meeting.
That's the motion, and?
That's the motion.
That's the current motion.
That's the current motion. So.
I'll second that.
It's, okay, it's been seconded. We're going to go ahead and vote on that?
Can I add my?
Yes.
Probably unhelpful comment at this point, not to muddy the water, but I just wanted to point out that that was the motion that was on the floor.
Yes.
And we can talk about our, you know, getting staff, directing staff to do some research. I also want to talk to the idea of the business of the meeting. And I can tell you, the first time I came to a board meeting as a parent, very impassioned and very concerned about what it is I was speaking about, I sat through a meeting, I gave my comment, and then I watched a vote happen with not a lot of discussion, and I didn't understand. And it took me a minute to realize that when the things come before us at the business meeting, they have been through a discussion process somewhere else, and that this is the culmination of work that someone did that I was not aware of. And that was hard and disheartening, and it was one of the reasons I chose to get engaged and say, wait a minute, I need to figure out how to engage. So another thing I would ask staff to consider and ask this board to do, if we are going to look at what this looks like, you know, we talk about engagement and opportunity, is looking, whether it's the superintendent's advisory board, but I do realize that some of this belongs to us as a board. Not everything belongs to the community. Yes, there's community input, but some things are actually our decision that we need to make for us. That we look at ways that we as board members are engaging in new ways to have conversations about items as they move along. So Dr. Baker, one of the things that you have done in these meet, two meetings, is you have agendized items that are information items, that allow us to have a conversation without a vote. And that isn't how past practice has always been. And so I appreciate the intention of bringing things forward for us to consider as an information item before there's a vote, and I would ask us to continue to do that, especially things that we know. So that tonight is an information, and it could have been an action, or it could have not been an action. So I think it's important for us to continue to have an information piece on these bigger issues, separate from a vote. So that as items like this come to us in the future, I'd ask us to consider it as an information item. I know sometimes there's urgency because of what comes next, but then allowing for a vote the next time after some of that discussion. For example, what we could have done is, in two weeks, perhaps staff could come back with information on what a call-in system looks like. And so we wouldn't have to change a vote that we took tonight, because we waited for some more information. So I, I think the thing that I'm asking is for us to consider, to do a little research before the next meeting, to not take a vote tonight on this. To have public comment, to consider it being read for the next meeting as we come back with what a phone-in system would look like, so that we're not, we're not contracting the ability for folks to engage right now. And I, I fully understand that at a random board meeting in February, depending on the state of the world, we may have no public comment, because we often don't have a lot of public comment, and so what we have in place is sufficient. But I know for this time, it's important to not decrease what we're doing. So I don't know that I'm ready to take, all that to say, I don't know that I'm ready to take a vote tonight on something specific, and I know that that's uncomfortable, and I know that it, it makes us have to make a decision next time, or continue to do the reading, which, again, I think people's own voices in, not that Letitia and Lori don't do a phenomenal job, or Joy, of reading those, but having people's individual voices heard is important. And if there's another mechanism that we can employ to do that, so that staff isn't having to read that, I think is important. Because if I get a stack of things, I will read them. I know that people don't always believe that we read them, but we do, and we consider it. But sometimes what we do in the business meeting is at the far end of the public engagement piece. So just balancing that out. So again, a lot of talk to say that I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision without some research from staff on an ability to call in, and a discussion around what that would look like in terms of prioritizing.
Okay, Dr. Williams?
Yeah, I, I would concur.
And then Dr. Benitez.
I would concur with that, because it is listed as an information and action item. So we can treat it as an information item as well. And I would want to treat this as an information item, and until we can get more clarity, we don't have to vote on it as an action item. It's presented both ways.
So Dr. Williams, are you, oh, are you retracting your motion? Is that, is that what you're saying? Because you, you're the?
Yes, I will, I will, I will retract my motion.
Right.
So?
And Dr. Benitez had a question.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait till after Dr. Benitez's question.
Okay, Dr. Benitez.
In my mind, though, we still have to decide what we're going to do for the next board meeting, unless we are going to continue the practice that we have been using for this, these previous board meetings. So I think that's still a question of what we want to do, and what, and how we want to inform our community members, that we will be continuing for our next board meeting.
Okay, so we'll have Brent address that.
Yes, I'm going to suggest, before we go on to that helpful suggestion from Dr. Benitez, first, you need to figure out what to do procedurally. I'll just remind you, this board has never adopted Robert's Rules of Order, but you frequently will adopt it ad hoc in the moment. So under Robert's Rules of Order, here's what would happen. Whenever a motion is moved and seconded, it no longer belongs to the moving party, right? So, so Felton, you, you birthed it, and it now belongs to the entire board, which means procedurally, what do you do? Somebody could make a motion to, to table the motion until a future date, which I think is where you were moving. No pun intended, where you were moving towards, Megan, to make a motion to table this discussion until a, until a future meeting.
Correct, so.
Brent, procedurally, what if I withdrew my second?
Well, so, I, I think that we can still get there, Mr. Meyer. So if she moves to table the motion, and then you second that motion, then the entire board says, or a majority says, we agree to table the motion, then the original motion isn't going to be voted on tonight, right? It would be brought until the next one.
Okay. And then, do I need to make a separate motion about what we should do for next time, or can I include that in my motion to table?
It all depends on how complicated you think it's going to be.
All right, let me see, let me see if I can do this.
I, I would suggest one at a time.
Well, let me see.
Okay.
I move that we table the motion on the floor, and continue the practice of accepting comments via email, and having them read at the board meeting, until and through our next board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, but clarification, and as well as the public comment continuing in person, correct, board member, Kerr?
Correct.
So you have a second, Benitez.
Okay. Do we have further discussion on the motion to table?
That's pretty, pretty big package.
Yes, to table the motion, but proceed with the way we've been doing it as far as public comment, in person and online.
It would have been simpler for me to table it and then go into this other piece, so we can discuss it.
Well, we can discuss it now, because it's been moved and seconded, so we're at the discussion portion.
But it's still a motion with both pieces.
Well, the, the motion on the table is that we?
Table the motion.
Table your motion, oh, boy.
And then continue the practice that we have currently been doing.
Yes.
Until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
When staff can come back with info.
Yeah, when staff can come back with a recommendation for us.
Yeah, that's a big package there.
Okay.
I don't know if I have that much money in the bank tonight.
Oh, you're a rich man. So let's vote on that. Or was there further discussion? No? All right, let's vote. So, all in favor? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, if I understand what I'm voting on, aye.
Okay. Ms. Kerr?
Aye.
Dr. Williams? Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that is a unanimous decision, and we will revisit this. That's what it looks like. We'll revisit it?
Right, thank you, Dr. Baker.
So now the question is, in revisiting, what transpires with this item in the interim?
It can come back under full business with additional information that's been requested by the board.
Okay.
And the additional information, Dr. Baker, is to explore options for live call-in, whereby email reading would no longer be necessary.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they can bring back a range of options that we can consider.
Okay, so we are now at reported board members. We will start with Dr. Benitez, who is zooming in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep my comments brief, since we've had two very engaging days of board workshop and board meeting. I want to thank, you know, everyone that has submitted public comment, that has emailed us, and everyone that has been able to physically come in. I want to thank everyone that's been watching our board workshops and our board meetings. An engaged community is a more healthy community, in, in all the social determinants of what we mean by healthy community. So I appreciate our staff for the presentations, the, I appreciate my board members for the dialogue, the conversation, the discussions. So I just want to thank everyone for a very productive and fruitful two days. To our community members listening, I would share two things. One is, we may not have all of the answers and specific details for what our opening of schools will look like, but we appreciate all of your input and all of your perspectives. Our staff is on it 24/7. They have my full confidence. More information, more details, more specificity will come. So I would ask our community members to stay vigilant, but be patient as this information goes out. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done to maintain the health and safety of students and staff, but also provide high-quality instruction. So more information to come. I would just ask our community members to wait as we roll out more detailed plans and more information, and thank them for their patience, and all of our willingness to make sure that we succeed this coming academic year.
Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The work of this district continues, and the challenges continue as well. But I'm always proud of this district putting its best foot forward to make sure that our students are taking care of our staff, our teachers. It's a tough proposition, but this district has never shied away from challenges, and that continues today. Also, I want to commend the staff for the workshops, always high quality, very revealing in terms of content. The information that comes out of the, the board workshops provides additional level, level of clarity that is very important to understanding and engaging us going forward. Also, want to just very quickly congratulate the governor for signing the bill that requires ethnic studies at our California State Universities. AB 1460 authored by Assembly Member Weber. And Dr. Weber sees this requirement finally added to the California State University, said Senator Stephen Bradford, co-author of AB 1460. As a college freshman enrolled in Dr. Weber's class, it was there that I truly learned about who we were as a people. Ethnic studies is critical in learning our contributions to America, and telling the true story of our rich history. I couldn't agree more with that assessment, and the impact that it had on me as well as a student at Cal State University, Long Beach. And the convictions that I had developed as a result of being a, taking courses in African-American Studies at California State University, Long Beach. That's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Kerr?
Yeah, I'll speak into the mic, because it sounds like the air conditioner, it sounds like we're about to take off with a jet engine all of a sudden. I want to thank staff for all of the hard work that you have put into the culminating reports as they stand this week, on this day, on the work that's been happening, from what the learning days look like, to our negotiations team. Thank you again for continuing to do the work on behalf of our students and families, and giving us the opportunity to hear and give input, and represent our constituencies with our, their concerns and their voices. Dr. Baker, in our public comment today, we heard about translation into Kamai, and I know there have been some hiccups, so I just wanted to acknowledge, and I, I have been assured that we are working on that, but I did want to publicly acknowledge that we knew that there were some, some difficulties over the last couple of days, and that we are actively working to solve that for our Kamai community, because we value their engagement, and we know that they've been participating and watching when given the opportunity. So thank you for that. I want to thank Ashley, Janelle, Danette, and Raquel for coming to talk about the book club. We've heard so much high-level work that's happening, and what happened with those 200-plus people over the summer, I think is an extraordinary example of the on-the-ground reflection of the high-level work that the district has been engaged with. We know that our students' experience in the classroom can be their first experience of inequity, for multiple reasons on a school site. And to have more than 200 staff members who support students in various ways, from administration to teachers, to office staff, to behind-the-scenes, commit that much time and energy to the work of equity in their own head and their own heart, so that it could translate into what the students will experience in their presence coming up in two weeks, I think is extraordinary. And I don't want to minimize that work. I want to lift up that that means that for those teachers? I want to lift up that that means that for those teachers, their students will experience them differently, based on my experience in that group and what I witnessed and what I heard teachers and administrators said, say, and say they want to do differently. And that it wasn't just a book club. And sometimes it goes back to the idea that workshops are for the public, but they're also for us to hear the work that we're doing with each other. And that was important work for me to hear and I think for us to acknowledge because we know that as those 200-plus people take that work to the next 200-plus and it becomes 500 or 700, that that makes a real difference in the lives of students and families in their day-to-day interactions with our staff. So I want to thank them and everyone who participated for being vulnerable, but especially for those leadership teams, for the moderators who took it on. We are well aware that we do not want black folks and people of color to do our work of educating. So I am grateful to those who are willing to take on the work of moderating groups that were serious and important and heavy. And that work matters to our kids and it mattered to the people that I was in community with over the summer. So I want to thank them for that work and I want to thank them for calling us all into the work moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. We can never thank our new superintendent, Dr. Baker, and her staff enough for the hard work that you've all been doing. And there's a lot of hard work ahead of us and unforeseen pitfalls, we know that. With this pandemic upon us, with national politics tearing us apart, it's easy to have things impinge upon our mentality that we don't fully understand and don't fully grasp. And I'm reminded of one of my favorite quotes that when John F. Kennedy was a young man, young president, and was visiting with Aldous Huxley, a renowned intellect, he asked Mr. Huxley, "What advice do you have for me in my new presidency with all of these challenges facing us?" And Huxley paused for a moment and he said, "Try to be a little kinder." I think that's good advice for us all.
Thank you. I will just echo the sentiments of my colleagues here tonight, that a debt of gratitude goes out to our executive staff. I know that you've been working around the clock. I know that you've been working six and seven days a week. And we appreciate that. We appreciate that because we truly care about what happens to our students. We truly want the best learning experience for them possible, and you're making that happen. You're making the tough decisions and we stand by you because we know that's what's best for the students. We try and do our best for the teachers. We try and do what's best for our staff. The bottom line is, we're all here for the kids. And I think that's what gives you the, the energy and the motivation to do what you do, and you do it well. So thank you to everybody. I know that staff is here from like 6:30 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, and we're, and we're grateful for everything that you've done for us. And the presentations have been wonderful and they reflect all that work that goes into it. Well, Dr. Baker?
Sure.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you. I have a few things I'd like to share before we close. I want to just echo the sentiments of thanking staff and those who presented at Board Workshop, those that are in the room, as well as those who joined us. And I also just want to acknowledge that none of this would be possible without our marketing and media services team, who many of whom have stood all day behind a camera. They've been out in a truck. They've coordinated cleaning the podium to making sure that things are heard and seen for our community. And so I just want to acknowledge, some of them are in the room and some of them are listening, but we could not do it without this team. And thank goodness for this team right now because we would have been at a complete loss when we closed schools. So thank you to that team. I also want to acknowledge publicly the negotiation teams of TALB and our district for their commitment to process and commitment to finding common ground. And so there are still some things to work out, but we have a signed MOU that really puts us in a good place for collaboration. And so those teams worked very hard, long days over the weekend, and I want to acknowledge them. Next, I want to remind the public about the school opening and safety plan document that's available on our district website in English, Spanish, and Kamai. And we had some outreach from wonderful community groups asking about getting copies of those, of our school opening and safety plans. And so if you're, if you are a community agency group, that you can get this into the hands of members in your, in an agency or right in your community. We are making hard copies. 3,000 hard copies will be coming in. You can call the superintendent board's Board of Education office and make a request, and we will also have many available for other people that would like to pick them up in locations around the city. But right now, they are available on the website. I also want to acknowledge the addition, additional thought that's being put into language support. So Ms. Kerr, you mentioned about Kamai translation. We are adding contracts around American Sign Language to support ASL. We are looking at a contract for additional accessibility tools for board documents that will allow for translation in board documents. And so we're committed, we're committed to that. And then lastly, just want to put a call out for families watching, that Parent University will be hosting a number of classes in partnership with marketing and media services, and that will get parents lots of information to come in the days leading up to school, navigating the use of Canvas, what does distance learning look like, special education, dual immersion. And so stay tuned for lots of activity over the next two weeks as we get ready to open school in a way that we have never done before. So thank you for a great couple of days.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements?
So moved.
Well, now I said announcements. I had something to read. It's really brief, so, okay, anyhow. So I thought I would share this quote from Mr. Rogers. "In times of stress, the best thing we can do for each other is to listen with our ears and our hearts and to be assured that our questions are just as important as our answers." Now we can adjourn. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.